Good morning.
Good morning.
Call the meeting to order. We'll have the invocation and then the pledge of allegiance. Please stand. Dear Lord, we thank you for another wonderful day. We thank you for this college. We thank you for everyone that works in this college, from the top to the bottom. We ask that you bless this semester and the rest of our semesters and that we meet the needs of the people of this county and the surrounding areas. We ask that you watch over us, keep us, guide us, and have us travel safely to and fro. All these blessings we ask in your son Jesus' name, in whom I pray, and in whose name you may pray. Amen.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty. We're right to the retirement adoptions. Got one? Oh, I didn't sign it this time.
Professor Karen Miller.
It came back. I put it in the wrong place.
Professor Karen Miller began her St. Petersburg College career as a composition and literature instructor on the Clearwater Campus in 1992, whereas Karen transferred to the Seminole Campus within a few years and became one of the first program directors on the Seminole Campus in 2004. And whereas Karen directed the Humanities, Communications, Digital Arts, and Social and Behavioral Science Departments as a Seminole Campus Program Director, and later chaired the Communications Department while teaching Film, Literature, and Composition courses. And whereas Karen shared her knowledge of higher education as participating in the St. Pete College Graduate Cohort at the University of Florida, and whereas Karen, a created and gifted faculty member, embraced online learning and has been instrumental in designing the ENC 1101 and 1102 courses of record and mentoring countless faculty members and students. And whereas Karen, a graduate of St. Petersburg College, is well-recognized for her humor and generosity, we wish her happiness in her retirement as she spends time with her family and explores the world. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions to the college and the community by Karen Miller and extend to her our best wishes for enjoyment throughout the years ahead. Said resolution being adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees this 19th day of August 2014. Here, here.
All I want to say is that St. Petersburg College has been an important part of my life for many years, and I shall miss all of you, my students, my colleagues, and my friends. Thank you.
I'd like to ask Diane Jessup and her friends to come forward. Whereas Diane Jessup began her career at St. Petersburg College in student activities on the Clearwater Campus in August 1992, and whereas Diane quickly proved to be a capable and dependable team member, and as a result of her efficiency was transferred to the Tarpon Springs Campus in 1994 to head the Registration Department and assist with evening courage, coverage, at what was there in the new Canal Park location. And whereas Diane became, yes, sorry, Nick Polaris needed a little more courage. Whereas Diane became the first dedicated full-time Tarpon Springs Campus Career Development Center Coordinator in 1997, and whereas Diane left St. Petersburg College Academics in 1999 to join the growing corporate training program where she became a Client Account Representative and established long-lasting relationships between St. Petersburg College and many local industries and municipalities. And whereas Diane returned to Student Services on the Clearwater Campus, which has worked as a Generalist and Student Support Advisor from 2009 to the present, encouraging students daily to fulfill their dreams, now therefore be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions to the college and to the community by Diane Jessup and extend to her our best wishes for enjoyment throughout the years ahead. Said resolution being adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees this 19th day of August 2014. Here, here. Congratulations. This way, Jessica.
Okay. I'm just looking at this as graduation from full-time employment, so, you know, we'll see what happens. But I enjoyed working in all of my positions at St. Petersburg College and, you know, picked up inspiration from everyone that I've worked with, and I thank all of you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
We have some new employees we have to introduce.
Yes, and I've asked the Vice Presidents to handle those introductions. We are very pleased to make these introductions today, and we have a special presentation, a couple of special presentations.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, President Law. It is my pleasure to introduce the new Associate Vice President of Online Learning and Services, Susan Klerk. Dr. Klerk comes to us from St. Leo's College, where she was the Assistant Vice President of Instructional Technology, and she has spent 15 years in this field. She has published various research and articles in regards to improving student learning in the online environment. Let's welcome Susan Klerk.
Ms. Klerk, do you have anything you want to say this morning? Welcome.
Thank you. I'm very excited to be joining the staff and faculty here at St. Petersburg College. The efforts that are being put forward with the online revitalization are very impressive, and it's exciting to be joining such an organized and enthusiastic group.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Good morning, Members of the Board, Dr. Law, and esteemed colleagues. It is my pleasure to present to you our new Tarpon Springs Provost, Dr. Marvin Bright. He comes from Virginia Community College System. He has several years of student success experience and has been already an added value person here at St. Petersburg College. Dr. Bright.
Good morning, Dr. Bright. Staff members.
Good morning. Good morning. It is absolutely, absolutely a pleasure and an honor to be here at St. Petersburg College at the Tarpon Springs Campus. I'm very excited of being here and enjoying the heritage and the culture of the area. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
I also have the pleasure of introducing to you our new Provost at the Allstate Center, Dr. Scott Fronroth. He's been a police officer. He's from Kaiser University and is ready to bring the campus further into the college experience and what we're doing at St. Petersburg College. Dr. Fronroth.
Good morning. It's a, it's a pleasure to be here. I'm excited to really take this campus and I'm excited to be part of the St. Petersburg team. So, look forward to a good year. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
I think Dr. Metz was going to make the next introduction for us.
Good morning, Trustees, Dr. Law, esteemed colleagues. It is indeed a pleasure to produce, to introduce to you Selena Saum, a recent graduate of St. Petersburg Collegiate High School and St. Petersburg College, a Gates Millennium Scholar for 2014. Selena is the first Gates Millennium Scholar for St. Petersburg Collegiate High School and the second for St. Petersburg College. This honor distinguishes her as a leader for America's future, and over 52,000 students applied for this honor nationwide, and she is one of 1,000 recipients. She has received a scholarship that will pay for her studies all the way through the doctoral program, and in addition, she'll be receiving leadership opportunities and an opportunity to get involved and get some additional professional development. What makes this award especially heartfelt is that her proud father, Savan Saum, is a longtime member of St. Petersburg College family and works on the St. Petersburg Gibbs Selena also distinguished herself at St. Petersburg College and St. Petersburg Collegiate High School through her leadership and service. She served as the President of the Multicultural Club, a Student Government Officer, a Project Chair for the Interact Club, a role model through Junior Achievement, and a member of St. Petersburg College Honor Society Phi Theta Kappa and St. Petersburg Collegiate High School National Honor Society. She plans to attend the University of Florida. She's leaving right after this meeting.
Go Gators.
And plans to attain a Bachelor's in Science, followed by a Doctorate in Pharmaceutical Engineering. It is with great joy that I present to you Mr. Saum and Selena Saum, our Gates Millennium Scholar. Congratulations.
I would first like to start off by thanking Ms. Metz for the kind words and especially St. Petersburg College for the opportunity not only to allow me to obtain my studies through St. Pete College, but to make me realize that I wanted to be a pharmaceutical engineer through the organic chemistry courses and also through my humanities courses. Thank you.
Ms. Saum, we have, we have a couple of Gators on the board, and if you need help in those chemistry courses or pharmaceutical engineering, I'll put you in touch with the Gators and they can give you their study notes.
Smart lady. Good, smart lady.
I'll put you right in touch with the Gators.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, and Dr. Law, I have the distinct pleasure this morning of introducing two people who need no introduction. Dr. Tom Furlong and Joe Lang have worked endlessly on behalf of St. Petersburg College, but I do want to take just a moment to note the extraordinary work they're doing with the Florida College System Foundation on behalf of our sisters, our sister colleges across the state of Florida. So, without further delay, it gives me great pleasure to introduce Joe Lang, and following him, Dr. Tom Furlong will take the mic. Thank you.
Thanks, Francis.
I'd like to take just, just a minute for the history of the State College Foundation. It was previously known as the Community College Foundation, but it was founded by one of the first Chairs of your Board, Phil Benjamin. Dr. Phil was, was in the very early years after the college was turned over to the college from the Board of Education, who used to be the, the Board of Trustees. And Phil served probably in the vicinity of 10 years and then was appointed to the first State Board of Community Colleges and chaired that for several years. But the importance in this event is that Phil Benjamin created legislatively the Community College Foundation, who today is presenting to you a substantial check. That foundation, when it started, of course, started with zero dollars, and today it has $23 million in it. And from my perspective, which was there the entire time, the entire success is attributable to Phil Benjamin. And so, I'd be, it's my honor to bring up Tom Furlong, who you all know. Tom is the immediate past Chair of the Foundation.
Thank you, Joe. Good morning, Board Members. Good morning. Good to be back here. Joe's so right in his comments about Phil Benjamin, and I can't let him sit down without mentioning Joe was there every step of the way with all the same boards that Phil was on and with our State Board of Community Colleges, and he's been a key member of our, of our state foundation. Let me just say a couple of numbers for you. It's pleased to be here today to present these checks. The Florida Foundation has now awarded more than $909,000 in scholarship funds to the 28 colleges. That's the interest off the principal Joe mentioned. Scholarships are aimed at relieving the nursing shortage and allied health shortages in the state and helping students who are the first in their family to attend college. This year, St. Pete will be receiving under the Nursing and Allied Health Program $12,895 from Florida Blue, and the First Generation Scholarships, $30,000 from the Helios Foundation, and $4,300 from Bank of America, for a total of $47,312. Florida Blue has been a big ally of ours in particularly supporting nursing and allied health and have been awarding scholarships since 2006. Last year, 31 nursing students from St. Petersburg College received the scholarships, and in total, St. Pete has received $113,300 in student scholarships since the inception. Helios, a newer partner since 2007, is in the First Generation in College Students category. Last year, 25 students from St. Pete received scholarships, and we received $159,000 from Helios. And finally, St. Pete is a recipient in the Dream Maker Scholarship Award from Bank of America, awarded since 2001. St. Petersburg has received $33,376 in scholarships since the inception. So, on behalf of the Foundation Board, I'd just like to thank you for all the good work you do as Board Members and glad we could support it. And Francis, it's a good work as well. It's very important in this foundation that we are aware of the local boards and we don't bump into each other with the same donors. And we, so it's very critical that the 28 Foundation Directors and the Director of the Florida College System Board work closely together. Since Joe helped put this together, I don't think we've had any issues. So, that's been a very positive experience. So, thank you. Glad to be here today.
Thank you. We are down to our organizational meeting, so, let me read this to you guys. Yes, sir.
I don't think Tom gave us the checks.
Oh, he's keeping them.
You gotta have the checks. I gotta tell you, as a former, as a former state and college employee, I didn't let them sit on my desk anyway. They've already been deposited. So, they're in the bank. But you know what? It would be, it would be good for the statewide if we did maybe a little picture. We're happy to.
Do whatever you like to do, Tom.
I think they, they run a series in the paper.
Why don't you write a new check and we'll.
Alright. Thanks, Mr. Lang. And Tom, Dr. Furlong, sure. So, by Chapter 1,001 and 61 of the Florida statutes requires that each year at its first regular meeting after July 1st, the College Board of Trustees shall organize by electing a Chair whose duty it shall be to preside at all meetings, to call special meetings of the Board, and attest to actions of the Board. And Board, and the Board shall also elect a Vice Chair to act as a Chair during the Chair's absence or disability of a Chair. Pursuant to this requirement, I now open the floor for nominations of the Board for Chair of the Board of Trustees for the year, fiscal year of 2014 and 15.
Mr. Chair, I would nominate Mr. Fine, who is our Vice Chair.
Second.
It's been properly moved, and there is a second. Any discussion? All signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unopposing. Mr. Chair, you take your gavel. You can finish this.
I'm out there.
New Chair, that's you.
Okay. I now open the floor for nominations for Vice Chair of the Board of Trustees for the 2014-15 fiscal year.
Mr. Chair, I would nominate Mr. Oliver.
Is there a second?
Second.
If there's no further nominations, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, so if there's no further nominations, I declare the nomination closed. I call a vote for, on the nomination. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Oliver. Thank you. The rules of St. Petersburg College requires the Board of Trustees to establish the schedule at its annual organizational meeting for its regular meetings for the college's fiscal year, including date, time, and location. I propose the following schedule for the fiscal year 2014.
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the schedule as printed, but if we could, hopefully, by the June meeting, we should be, the Midtown meeting should be done. I would add that if we could have a June 2015 meeting at the Midtown Campus, the new Midtown Campus.
I don't know whether you need a second for that, but I would second that.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, one other one, I'm sorry. We haven't been to Tarpon in a while, and Dr. Bright is new. I would ask that the President, Fine, whenever he sees fit, to add that into maybe the schedule. Maybe we have a meeting in Tarpon.
That's a long way.
I know it is.
Very long way.
Say, I'm sorry. Yes, let's.
It hasn't been that long since we were there.
Dr. Bright, you see, I'm trying to help you.
Shall we, shall we put it on the schedule right now? Is there a?
I would, I would let the President decide. I mean, 'cause you.
Give me a chance just to, to work it in. To be perfectly honest, I think we have some ceremonial things that take place at the May meeting next year.
Oh, really? Okay.
And, and that's why we moved that one to Seminole, okay? So, we need to have a little bit of ceremony out there. We'll, we'll find occasion to visit.
Sure.
Let's see how we can get, you know, the roadies get a little restless trying to pack it all up and tear it all down, so. We shall make it work, Mr. Mr. Former Chair.
Okay. Can I have a motion to accept with the Midtown being June 16th and the flexibility for the President to give us another one for Tarpon?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's the schedule of the meeting, sir.
Note, I'm the only North County person, so that Tarpon issue wasn't, you know.
That's why you moved for it.
Oh, guess we're down to Board comments. Board Members, any comments?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to comment on one thing. I heard the All College Day was a major success, and I'm sure Dr. Law's going to talk about that. And we should know that enrollment is up and very good. We're going to have a report on that, I hear, too. But most importantly, it looks like everything ran on all cylinders. We weren't, I, I got a lot of comments, great comments, about the first day and that we were on top of things, and especially having the students already enrolled and in their courses, and there were less financial aid issues. So, it sounds like, Dr. Law, we had a great first day. You and your staff should be commended on, on, on the job well done and being prepared. I, I truly, I'm telling you, every year I get at least five negative comments. This year, I didn't get any. I mean, everybody that called me said, "I don't know what you guys did, but it's totally different." And people were on their way to class as opposed to trying to figure out issues on the first day. Now, that last, we'll see, but you should be commended on you and your staff. You should definitely be commended on the first day. And like I said, I heard the, I heard some other folks, comments from staff at the college that talked about the All College Day, how great of a time they had and how we really got them geared up and ready to go. So, stat, you and your staff should be commended on that. Thank you.
Other comments? The only comment I would make, and as we change seats, Mr. Givens, was thank you for your service as the Chair. I don't think people realize how much Devron does behind the scenes for this college, and he has served, continues to serve the college well, so I hope you join me in a great round of applause for what Devron's done for this college.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, first of all, let me express my appreciation to, to Mr. Givens. He and I, boy, sometimes adversary better friends, I think is the way to describe it. Okay, we, we argue like brothers, and then we, we smile and celebrate like brothers. A couple of things at your place. I wanted you to see the, the amount of attention to detail and work that went into our Faculty Welcome Back event. We do that, it's a full morning event where we celebrate the accomplishments of our faculty and try to distill the, the key issues that we want to move forward. It's getting harder and harder to, to pack all those accomplishments into just one morning, but under the direction of Vice President Ann Cooper, because it is an instructional academic exercise, just a phenomenally uplifting day, and she and I think my staff had a role to play that I hadn't seen them in a week or so before the event, they, they did fine. So, thank you, Dr. Cooper, and all of your team who do that. Secondly, we had, well, let me, let me do it this way. During the question and answer with the faculty, we had a wonderful comment from one of our, our faculty members, a real contributor, and he said, "Dr. Law, are we, are we connecting with support for students in areas that are not on our mission? The kinds of things that students, that intrude in their life? Can they get help when they need it outside?" And we were able to respond right away. Vice President Williams and her team have been working to have what's called a Resource Guide, so that faculty can have at their fingertips an access to other community resources that might be beneficial to students who, who find different hurdles in their life. We'll be working more and more with them in that. That's the dialogue we consistently have with faculty, is I get into conversations to help my students, and I'm not quite sure where the resources are to help. So, we'll continue to work with them on those kinds of things. So, I was very proud of Vice President Williams that we could do that. And then lastly, the flyer on the success, the success rates for the summer courses, and once again, you see, this is the, the one-page flyer, you see increased success rates across the board, but we continue to find in some areas stunning success rates. African-American males up 23 percent, Hispanic, Latino females at, at 87 percent success rate. So, the, the work that we are doing through the college experience, through the, the learning centers, through the counseling and advising parts, has, I think we're seeing the throughput. You'll see, we need it. We, we, part of our presentation today is the original cohort that four years ago at this meeting, when I walked in the door, I said, "Let's take a picture of who's here, and we'll watch them go through." And the results are, you'll understand why we changed a lot of things, because the results for that group are nowhere near what the results for groups entering today we would expect. So, we'll, we'll close the door on that one, but I felt like the Board should see why we're doing all, all that we're doing. Mr. Chairman, I'm with you. I, I believe that, that the year started off on, on its very best foot that, that we could have. We have all of the members who are responsible for that will be coming together a week from Friday to codify all the changes that we made. What happened? African-American males up 23 percent, Hispanic, Latino females at 87 percent success rate. So the work that we are doing through the college experience, through the learning centers, through the counseling and advising parts has, I think we're seeing the throughput. You'll see, we need it. Part of our presentation today is the original cohort that four years ago at this meeting, when I walked in the door, I said, "Let's take a picture of who's here and we'll watch them go through." And the results are, you'll understand why we changed a lot of things, because the results for that group are nowhere near what the results for groups entering today we would expect. So we'll close the door on that one, but I felt like the Board should see why we're doing all that we're doing. Mr. Chairman, I'm with you. I believe that the year started off on its very best foot that we could have. We have all of the members who are responsible for that will be coming together a week from Friday to codify all the changes that we made. What happened on the fly? What did we learn along the way? What do we have to ingrain? How do we get the training organized so we can move that forward? So we are off and running. I'll let somebody else give you the actual numbers of what our increases look like for the semester. Thank you all for your support.
Thank you.
Dr. Law, can I ask that someone please send this to Ken Burke?
Yes, please.
Just pop that mail to him.
Thank you. He may be on the mailing list.
Review and approval of the minutes. Can I have a motion?
Some moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carried. Monthly reports, Mr. Lang.
Mr. Chair, at this meeting, I would like to, the annual meeting, take this opportunity to thank the Staff Legal Office for the excellent communication that they maintain with my office. It makes, I think, I hope, both of our offices run a little smoother. And so largely, I thank Suzanne, and in addition, I had the wonderful opportunity to attend the Faculty Fall Meeting. I was particularly impressed with the professors, teachers, Ameri-Tai that were presented at the beginning. A lot of people I remembered and remembered very fondly.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Gardner.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair, trustees. You received this week a memorandum describing the college's efforts to implement our plan to comply with new regulations on Title IX and they're clarifying guidance. And in addition to that, also the new amendments to the Gene Clery Act for campus safety. The focus of these new provisions is the prevention of and the response to incidents of sexual violence, assault, domestic violence, and stalking on college campuses. And while this is targeting residential housing, all institutions of higher education have a plan that they need to put in place and implement. So to that end, the college is planning to have this prepared for our annual security report that's due in October, and our plan will include enhanced reporting and some enhancement to our grievance procedures, our protocols, awareness and prevention programs, ongoing training, and expanded access to resource for students and employees. A compliance working group has been put in place, and we will be bringing you and providing to you some enhancements and proposed revisions to our board policy and procedures in the next coming months. So that's my report.
Thank you very much. Moving six, oh, I guess we get to see who's here. Fall enrollment update. Good news this year.
Good morning, members of the Board, Dr. Law. I, along with Jesse Coragio, we have the distinct pleasure of discussing enrollment, which is up. And at the beginning of every term, we come into the Board and share a little glimpse under the hood in terms of what the student body looks like. As you know, classes began yesterday. We're going to look at credit enrollment only, so this does not include non-credit continuing education, so this is just credit-seeking enrollment. And this slice looks at head count on the left. As of yesterday, we were up 2.2 percent. And student semester hours, or SSH, which is the accumulation of all of the credit hours that our students are enrolled in, and we were up 1.4 percent. Did a little poking around the state yesterday, and we're in good shape there. Five of our sister institutions that responded to an email, they were all down, ranging from two and a half percent down to eight percent down across the state. So this is, I think, the result of a lot of good work. I think Dr. Williams is going to explain in a moment some of the things and changes we made this summer to achieve these results. This slide looks at student semester hours by our lower division and our upper division. And you can see, lower division, we were only slightly up, just under 1 percent up for year-over-year, and upper division enrollment is up 6.7 percent. That has been a trend that we've seen for several years now, growth in the upper division enrollment. And again, total enrollment, 1.4 percent student semester hours. If we look at our top three baccalaureate programs, nursing, business administration, and education, they comprise about 67 percent of our total upper division enrollment. And you can see, nursing was up 21 percent, business was up 10 percent, and education up 2.2 percent. And then towards the bottom, you can see a trend, looking at the proportion, looking at baccalaureate enrollment over all enrollment. And so five-year trend, we've increased from 9.4 percent proportionately to now 12.7 percent is where we stand today. This line chart is looking at head count data. It's a measurement we call enrollment type, and continuing student is one of those types, and that's a student who is with us today, and they have been enrolled in at least one of the last three terms. Okay, so kind of a measure of retention, if you will, showing persistence. So just barely up, if we look at that slice of students, to last year. If we look at that population by ethnicity, you'll see that African-American students were up 1.2 percent, Hispanic students, 8.8 percent year-over-year, white students down 1 percent, all others down 2.4 percent. This line chart looks at the other two types of enrollment. When we look at enrollment type, we look at continuing, we look at new, which is new to SPC, could be a first-time-in-college student, or it could be a transfer student. And then we look at readmits. So the first two, the top two lines represent our new students, so we were up 8.7 percent in new students coming to the college this fall. We landed at 68, 64 versus 63, 15 last year. Readmit student is one who is with us today, but they've not been enrolled in the last year, so they've had at least a year, a gap of attendance, at least a year. This is looking at first-time-in-college, so not transfer, these are brand-new college students. We were up overall 8.8 percent in our FTIC. We did a good job, I think, of reaching out to our Pinellas County High School students. As of yesterday, we had seen a 4 percent increase over last year in the number of Pinellas High School graduates that came to SPC. African-American first-time-in-college students up 19.7 percent. Hispanics up 18.3 percent. White, 4.9 percent, 7.4 for all others. Total FTIC, 8.8 percent. I think this represents, illustrates the hard work that we did through the late spring and summer, trying to reach new students. And if we look at age, this is all of our students, 18 and under, 1.5 percent increase year-over-year there, 19 to 21, 5.2 percent increase, and so on. You see that the majority of the biggest increases were in the traditional 21 and And gender, females year-over-year up 1.8 percent, male students up 2.9 percent. Proportionately, male students are still at 39 percent of our total students. That hasn't really changed much in the last few years. And in conclusion, for my part of this presentation, 2.2 percent increase in head count, 1.4 percent in student semester hours, baccalaureate enrollment significantly up, new student enrollment significantly up, FTIC, which is a subset of the new student population, also up, the 19.7 percent increase in FTIC African-American, 18.3 percent increase in Hispanic FTICs, and then the traditional student population up 3.6. Any questions? It is, again, a pleasure to do this. It's been a few years that since I've been able to come up here and report a positive growth in enrollment.
Dr. Law, I don't know who should answer this, but my question relates to maybe more toward Mike Bennett. Is it, what is that time period between the beginning of a semester and the financial aid, and then we have another drop-off, right? Is that not the case, or?
Mike, come on up and answer the question. We have a couple of financial aid slides, but they're not right on this topic. But while we have the question in front of us, let's do it.
We won't have a drop-off. We're awarding nightly, and the processing has been very quick this year. We've been processing students within 48 hours.
No, I mean, there are going to be students that won't get financial aid. Will that affect ultimately our increase?
No, no. We're making real-time decisions all the way along, Mr. Givens. If the paperwork still has some lag, we may move a student forward, but in our professional judgment, they're going to get the aid, okay?
You understand what I'm saying, Dr. Law? Because normally, there's like a period where the student's in class, and then they don't get financial aid, and then they drop out after they.
They have had their decision. They're getting aid or not getting aid, and we do a pretty good job of managing that, helping them manage that gap if it's not in their hand right now. Okay, but good question.
Great, thank you.
Now, we do have the potential to grow a little bit during the first week of classes, though, on the other end, that's not related to financial aid, per se, but we're actually up a little bit higher even today.
Yeah, this morning, we were up 2 percent rather than 1.4. So there's always, no matter what you do, the moms finally get those guys off the couch and get them to registration.
All right.
Great.
So we're really proud of the data that we shared with you this morning, but that would not have happened had we not changed the way that we did business. I think that over the last couple of years, we were doing business as usual. But the situation is important, is urgent, and it was time for us to get up and get moving, so we made some changes. And to present to you what we shared this morning, we had to undo some of our processes that we thought were very good processes and very easy to understand, and found that they were very confusing and not easy to understand. And we had to work with our team to remove obstacles that were causing students to not get to the enrollment stage and to drop off in the process prematurely, getting too frustrated and decided, forget it, I'm not coming. Well, we weren't going to accept that, and we decided to change those processes. We enhanced our marketing, as you have seen over the last year. We've made a lot of changes under the leadership of Diana Sabino and working with other team members. We have totally improved our communications, but we are so not there. We have a lot of work to go, to do before we get our communication straight. There's still a little bit of confusion there, where our left hand may not know what the right hand's doing, but we are communicating better and faster and more effectively. And we implemented our weekly webinar on enrollment. This was very good because it helped us collaborate college-wide. The provost, the deans, associate provost, our business office, Jesse, and the whole team had a part in improving enrollment. The deans would share weekly what they were doing to improve enrollment, as well as how full our courses were. And we had goals that we set. We looked at wait times on all the campuses to keep us, sort of keep a pulse on, how long are students waiting, and do we accept that? So we'll be working on improving those things. We also improved how students understand payment and making sure they know that they have options if their financial aid is not available. They can get, you know, the payment plan or what have you. And so we made a lot of those changes. On August 29th, we're going to have a collaborative lab to look at what we've done and make further improvements and enhancements for the spring registration. Any questions?
Just a comment, Dr. Wait, Mr. Chair, is that okay? It's a quick comment. First of all, you all should be commended on a great job done. I mean, this obviously works, not, well, you can't, there's not much you can say about this besides great job. I would add, though, the one comment that I've been getting is from in my community, the barber shops, the churches, and all of them, they like for us to be a part of their events and to come out and recruit there, and we haven't been able to do that because I guess we changed some things. So if we could figure out how to maybe talk to some of those folks about those community events, high schools even complained to me about, well, we asked a certain person to come and they couldn't come, and said they had the processes changed. Now, mind you, let me say this, this has worked, so.
Yes.
So, I mean, you know, maybe there's, you know, a way to figure out how to have to touch them and make them feel good, but obviously, this is the way we should be continuing to move down this track, Dr. Law, so.
And that's what the 29th is meant to do. Not a criticism. Not a criticism. It's meant to say, how did we get where we are? What did we learn? We did, we redeployed some resources to 911 for some things, and of course, it's.
Can't argue with success here. I mean, I'm not arguing with success. I just remind you, Dr. Law, I tell you all the time what Dick Greco told me one time. You can paint the street of gold, but somebody's still going to complain about the glare, so.
If they're asking for us to be there, we'll be there, but Tanja, please share. We've been out to the local churches on Sundays, and that didn't come off my desk.
No, 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 not on that, Dr. Law. We're doing that, we're doing that. I guess when they're doing their own kind of college days at these schools and churches, and we haven't been able to send someone to them, and I know we will, so that's why I'm just mentioning it.
Thank you. We'll make sure that happens.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mike?
I just wanted to say, having been watching this process from beginning until now, how do you say it? We've come a long way, baby. I mean, wow, from that two-page, single-spaced letter that came in the mail in, I think, May to, you know, these big fold-out wow pieces that started showing up towards the end. I dropped her off in Tallahassee yesterday, explaining the big puffy eyes today. God, you never realize how much you entrust a college until you go through that process. But I wanted to say to Diana, who I can't see, but I pushed her harder than anyone else, and you were willing to work with me and listen, and Dr. Law was willing to work with me and listen. I'm very, very, very proud of us coming from, hey, we're projecting to be 3 percent down, to be in almost 3 percent up. So congratulations to everybody who was part of that process and for being willing to make those changes and look at things differently. You should be very proud of yourselves.
Thank you.
Very good. Wanted to give a little bit of info on financial aid. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
The only thing I wanted to say was, is that in any organization, singing your own praises is very, very easy, but actually coming out and saying, hey, we might not have been doing it right, and we changed that, takes real courage. And that courage didn't, I mean, it didn't come from up here, very candidly. The courage came from you all and really digging into statistics and digging into, you know, where are the hurdles? And, you know, again, it didn't come from us, it came from you all, and we're very grateful.
For financial aid, you see that, there's the slide right there, we're trending similar to where we were a year ago. So you have the number of students awarded, the total dollars, the average award package. At the end of the year, we'll be at $24,168 million. And one of the trends that we're seeing that we're very pleased is we're seeing that borrowing is down $2,000 in lower division and upper division, which is something that we're working hard with students. An update on cohort default and our outsourcing, we currently have 4,919 students that are delinquent, and we are very pleased with the outsourced company that began their work on June 20th, began calling our students, and from June 20th to August 8th, they have already cured 1,148 accounts. So they've helped students get into repayment or consolidate to get out of being delinquent, and we continue having conference calls with them every two weeks to monitor their work.
Great job.
Good job.
A question on the cured accounts, are we looking at recovering 100 percent of the total or 50 cents on the dollar?
It's not our money, it's the government's money. It's all that's happening, is they.
But aren't we on the hook for?
We're just on, in this part, we're on the hook for the numbers. We've got to be diligent in getting students into a repayment plan and to be active. In some cases, we are on the hook, Mr. Oliver, but these are the ones who are already past that.
These are past that, so.
And what's the number that the government, I mean, what's the percentage?
The percentage, like when they're looking, when they're looking at the cohort, we're looking to stay under 30 percent.
Okay, and what are we at currently?
We're currently at 22 percent.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Going to dive into some more numbers. This is looking at, Dr. Law alluded to this earlier in the meeting, this is looking at the, that cohort. So we originally started with the Board four years ago and pulled out that group of students, and we followed them as we went along. So we've been touching base with this, you know, a couple of times a year and looking at this group of students. So it's the Fall 2010 First-Time-In-College cohort that we're going to look at. I want to. cohort that we're going to look at. I want to have everybody keep in mind, many of these students didn't get to experience some of the best parts of the college experience that we've done. You know, some of these outstanding differences that we've seen in course success rates are a function of things we've been doing the last couple of years. As we look at this, you'll see many of those students dropped off prior to that time. So, keep that in mind as we look at some of these numbers. Another way I think we could interpret this information is if we hadn't done anything four years ago, if we hadn't done all this work and developed, this is the outcome we'd see for our students that are starting today. So, the first thing we're going to look at is retention, and the way we calculate retention is we look at two things. For each one of the terms up there, we're going to look at both, are they still enrolled, or have they finished with an award since that time? Have they completed? So, we actually look at cumulative completers across time. The blue bars there represent enrollment. So, for each one of those, you can see how enrollment starts to drop off. Now, I didn't include summer just because it looks a little bizarre when you add summer terms, but you see kind of that, that progression drop-off as you move from fall to spring, fall to spring throughout the process. What the reddish-brown bar represents is cumulative completers. So, that's cumulatively over time as those students start to complete. And you can see, even after we look at almost four years, we still have over a third of those students who are still enrolled here that have not completed. And then you can see our completer rate starting to increase. The numbers up top represent the retention rate, so that's a relationship between both of those bars. So, from the first fall-to-spring term, we retained about eighty-five percent of our students. So, that means about fifteen percent were lost just from that one semester to another. When we look at the following fall, where the case of retained after a year, the number drops to sixty-five percent. So, about a third of those students have left after just a year of being here enrolled at the college. And then you look across the four-year period, when we look at those that are still enrolled in spring twenty-four and those that have since been awarded either a degree or certificate in that timeframe, we're looking at about thirty-six, six-point-six percent of the students. So, here's some more information on retention as we start to break down into the subgroups that we've been comparing for many of the elements of the college experience. For our male students, after the end of spring 2011, they were eighty-two-point-two percent was our retention rate. At the end of spring 2014, it was thirty-two percent. For our African-American students, it was eighty-seven-point-two percent, and then down to twenty-three-point-six percent at the end of spring 2014. Hispanic, eighty-five to thirty-five, and then two of our minority male groups that we've been focusing on, African-American males, Hispanic males, you see the change there from the first spring down to the final spring. African-American males moving from eighty-six percent to about eighteen percent, and Hispanic males from eighty-five percent to about twenty-eight percent. This information is just focusing, instead of retention, we're going to focus on the graduation rate. So, how many of those students actually received a degree or certificate as they've moved through the pipeline? During the four-year periods, now we're taking it all the way to summer 2014, we had seven hundred and sixty awards that were given to students, and it was given to six hundred and eighty individual students. So, some students receive multiple awards. They may receive an embedded certificate, and then later on, receive a degree in that particular area. You can see where you start does make a difference for these students. Those that started full-time had a thirty-five percent graduation rate after the four-year period. Those that started part-time only had a nine percent graduation rate. For males, overall, it was seventeen-point-three percent. African-American students, it was six-point-two percent. For Hispanic students, it was sixteen-point-seven, and then for our two minority group, male groups, we have five-point-six percent and eighteen-point-two percent. So, noteworthy observations, you see how much the retention rate changes when we look at fall to fall as compared to the fall-to-spring information. Retention rate at the end of spring was thirty-six-point-six percent. You can look at our retention rate information there for our different subgroups, and then we talked a little bit about the graduation there at the end with our overall rate being eighteen-point-five percent. Another anomaly we've noticed, and you've heard us mention graduation rates before, often we'll refer to the IPEDs, which is the national information, but they really only look at a subgroup of students which is full-time, first-time in college. So, you saw the differences between the full-time and the part-time students. But another anomaly we've noticed with our student base, not just with these students, but even if we've gone forward, many of our students may start full-time, but by the second semester, they've moved into a part-time status. And a lot of that is, is they, I think they realize the impact and the demand of school, they'll make that switch right away. More traditionally here, it's been about half of the students that start full-time by the spring semester have moved into a part-time status. So, any questions I can answer?
So, Mr. Chairman, these are students who started with a weaker face-to-face orientation. They did not have learning plans. They did not have the benefit of early alert in the developmental gateway courses. They did not have the kind of proactive career counseling. I mean, you see how dismal the results are if students are just left to their own devices. And we think that we have done spectacular good work to intercept those students in ways that allow them to take control of their learning and move forward. What we haven't yet done, and we're watching, is the success that we have been sharing with you and for which keeps us feeling very motivated, is course-by-course success. We're going to start shifting that focus to say, do students stay with us? Does that course-by-course success really do what we think it does? That is, students start taking higher ownership in getting to the finish line. And I think we've, we've opened the door to make sure that, that our faculty talk that up, that our counselors talk that up. You'll be very delighted by the time we get back to your planning session in December to see how much progress we've made in a year with our career centers, to totally revamp those under your guidance and direction. But again, I, we're going to close the door on the 2014 because the numbers are going to stay the same. You're seeing what that group will do. I just want to be sure that this board feels the lift that we're feeling. We're doing this for a reason, and we think we're making a difference. Absent what we're doing, those are the results we'd report to you year over year. Change a little bit, but not much.
A year from now, can we, can we track a group of students, I mean, and I'm sure we're doing this, but take a group of students who are currently getting our 2014, you know, Lexus version of student counseling, and track them to a year and two years and see, because that, that's, you know, looking at, looking at that kind of statistic.
We can bring some newer data.
Before and after, I think we can reconstruct some of the more recent cohorts too now. We have that capacity, but that's exactly what we want to do. Does any of this really make the throughput difference? We know when we measure it small, there's a big difference. Do we get it in its totality at the end? So, we'll, we'll continue to work with this. Here's, here's the issue, I get, you know, I get preach about this, but when you were talking about courage, this, this is what courage looks like. We show you results that we're not very happy with, okay? But together, I think we have rolled up our sleeves to say, what are we doing differently? And we have a better story to tell today than we did four years ago when, when we were doing this. So, these are not the results we have to live with. These are results that we're saying, we're finished with this, so... Let us, we'll, we'll continue to do this, but we are shifting. When you see the number in the enrollment, where the continuing students are virtually the same, I'm thinking that that number should start to spread. We should be doing better with the continuing students, right? If they're succeeding, our theory is they'll stay with us. So, we should be starting to see that number get off the, the common line and get onto its own trajectory, which should be somewhat higher. I'd, I'd rather keep three or four or five hundred of thirty-two thousand students than go find five hundred new students to, to take their place. That's hard work.
Any other questions?
Thank you for listening. Thank you for your support.
Thank you very much. Student success and achievement.
Oh, Jesse, your advertisement is here. This thing is ubiquitous. Jesse, you might as well go ahead. For all this hard work, I let him get a two-minute advertisement.
So, so we're certainly proud of all that we've accomplished, and we realize it's not about just focusing on the data. It's not about having a data system like Pulse BI, but it's actually about changing your culture. And I think under Dr. Law's guidance, our culture has dramatically changed here at the institution. How we use data, how we prostate, process data, how we look at things transparently, how we work collaboratively. So, we want to share that with everyone else. So, we're going to have a conference here at the beginning of November for two days. We're going to bring in many of the state colleges, but we've had interest from colleges actually across the country, who are going to bring leadership teams here to the college with their IR folks and have conversations about how you change data culture. So, we're very excited about that. We're about halfway full already, and we're still about three weeks away from our early bird discount ending. We've got a few presidents coming, we've got a number of vice presidents coming, a number of IR folks, and we're very excited about being able to share and learn as well. We're going to be able to learn from some of these other teams too on, on what they're doing. So, that's moving the needle conference.
Congratulations.
Jesse's being a little disingenuous here. He got a call from the best-known national spokesperson in this field, asking if they could come and give one of the keynote addresses. So, we will be hosting Dr. Mark Milliron, who is without a doubt the, the leading spokesperson in, in the area of student success, and he'll be giving one of ours, and indicated he would pay his own way to get here to talk to this group, so...
Wow.
This is a nice, Jesse's done a nice job with this. All good.
Thank you very much. Dr. Oliver?
Good morning. With me today, via video, was one of our students, Jonathan Jox, who will tell you about the new universal bus pass agreement with PSTA. Jonathan, you're up.
Thank you, Dr. Oliver. Members of the board, Dr. Law, I'm a sophomore student at SPC Seminole campus, and I am majoring in pre-med to become a neurosurgeon. Also, I'm the president of Student Government Association of Seminole Campus. First, I would like to thank the board for always looking out for the best interests of the students and for making the investments necessary to ensure student success. Your leadership is noticed and appreciated. I'm here this morning to share the good news about the college's agreement with PSTA to provide universal bus service for SPC students. Under the terms of agreement, every SPC student enrolled in credit courses on every campus can ride any PSTA bus on any route seven days a week. All we need to do is show our student ID. Support from this initiative comes from our student activities fees. This addresses a concern students have had for years. We have been discussing bus access issues for some time and purchasing individual month bus passes for students. It was difficult to decide which students should receive the limited number of bus passes and difficult to manage the distribution of those passes. During this past spring, Dr. Oliver arranged a meeting with PSTA CEO Brad Miller and County Commissioner Janet Long, specifically to discuss the concerns of Seminole campus students had about the access to bus service, especially the lack of the mid-afternoon nights and weekends. The topic of universal bus passes came up at that meeting, a parallel to the programs we've had with Microsoft and BayCare, and meetings with the student life leadership coordinators and student government presidents followed. The student government presidents enthusiastically endorsed the concept and unanimously endorsed using student fees to support the bus pass program. One additional benefit, all our SPC faculty and staff can also ride any bus for free by showing their ID. We still want to work with PSTA to increase the number of buses and times those buses service our campuses. My peers have expressed their concerns about the insufficient bus service in the afternoon, evening, and weekends. I'm grateful for having the bus service, but I too have found it difficult, and it prevents the students from taking evening courses and attending evening events. Student government believes this new partnership with PSTA will increase our ability to work with them and improve Seminole. Our goal for Seminole, for example, is to make one hundred and thirtieth Street from Park to one hundred Second Street Avenue a major route with every service, service every ten minutes at peak, and extra service in the afternoons, weekends, and evenings. Thank you again for your ongoing support, and now I'm off to class, so I'll toss this back to Dr. Oliver for any questions. Thank you.
Jonathan is one of those feel-good stories. He's SGA president, has a very high GPA, going on to be a neurosurgeon. We would not, he would have been invisible to us potentially had he not come into the Student Life and Leadership Office and asked for a bus pass. That's how we were introduced to Jonathan, so he's a feel-good story. The, the program in sum, seventy-five thousand dollars paid from student activity fees for a one-year contract, started for the first day of classes, unlimited bus service, all students taking credit courses on all routes by showing the student ID, including express routes, shuttles, and trolleys. As a side benefit, SPC faculty, full and part-time, are able to ride, faculty and staff, able to ride the bus at no, at no charge. There will be collaborative effort to publicize this arrangement, and PSCA is going to be tracking the numbers, so we know what that looks like from this point forward. So, with that, any questions?
All members?
Thank you very much.
Good thing.
Jonathan, you did a great job. Budget and finance.
I'm sorry, was that a, an action item? Somebody, just a presentation, so then I have the authority to sign that contract? Yeah, seventy-five grand, okay.
Okay, good morning.
Morning.
Every month, we come to you and bring an update on a financial report, and starting next month in September, we'll start reporting on the FY fourteen-fifteen year. But today, I kind of wanted to just round out the FY thirteen-fourteen year and tell you how we ended. So, this chart shows our budgeted actual revenue and expense. As you've seen monthly, we've run really tight this year with enrollment being down, however, we managed our costs, so we were able to pretty much come out flat and cover our expenses. This gives a little bit of additional detail, a few of the highlights. Overall, our revenues were at ninety-seven percent and our operating costs as well, which is why we're right about flat. Our personnel and benefit costs were about two hundred thousand dollars under budget, so very close to budget. One thing to note, you'll see that the instructional and faculty full-time showing just over a hundred percent. That's actually more of an administrative anomaly. Each of these categories rolls up based on general ledger codes, and at the time of the budget, librarians were actually considered administrative, and over the course of thirteen-fourteen, they actually moved into the instructional faculty full-time line. So, that's just a disparity between the budget and the actuals there. You can see that the administrative's lower at ninety-four percent. Our current expenses that we managed throughout the year were at eighty-five percent and left us with an overall flat budget. And so, when we go to all the different funds that we looked at, even during the budget process, this is a look at how we ended the year with our fund balance. So, what is our total remaining funds in each of these areas? So, our operating budget, which is what we look at every month, had a fund balance at the end of the year of six million dollars. Fund two includes our student activity and our grants and contracts. So, the student activities budget has a fund balance of just over three million dollars. Grants and contracts, just over four million. Auxiliary funds, which is our fund three, that's where we look at bringing in funds from other areas, and we have more flexibility in how we spend those funds, is close to seven million dollar fund balance. And then our facilities construction is at just under twenty-nine million. Now, that twenty-nine million is mostly going to be used for some of our major construction projects that we have going on now, but that is available. And are there any questions I can answer? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. I had, or Doug had one question about the overall budget. Is it possible, I mean, I think we do an excellent job. Overall, is it possible, one of the board meetings, to drill down to, what does it cost for a nursing student? What's our, I mean, what's a bachelor's, what's an associate, and start looking at those, those numbers?
Yeah, be happy to.
What, what?
Do on one of the meetings.
No, we can, we can do that.
I just think that would be...
Fairly easily, yeah, with our, with our business and...
I would think so. I just thought that would be very interesting to see what a bachelor student costs us, as opposed to their associates. Where's the margin and things?
Happy to do that, yeah.
Mr. Chair, could I modify that just a little bit? I'd love to have that, but I also would like to see where we rank along with the, the schools that are doing that. So, for example, if USF, what's their cost of a nursing student, as opposed to us, so that we can show, I know what the value is of that?
Here's, let, let me, that one, I don't know what the, we could do ours, this, right now, if you want. We could do ours up and do it, but, but I'm saying, I don't know what the O's. I, I trust other presidents. I'd want to double-check the numbers before I repeat them to you, okay?
All right.
But I think you're, you're right. I'm anxious to, to, to display that because there are some very curious things. The disparities between programs is wider lateral. That is, we'll have wider costs at just the associate level than we will between associate and bachelor's in some cases. And I think that's important information as we go into public policy discussion. So, yeah, let us do that. It'd be fun to put together.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Advanced creative matters, human resources. Should we take the personal, personnel report first? Everyone has read it. Can I have a motion?
So, move.
Second. All, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So, move. Health insurance presentation?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. President. I'm Patty Jones, Associate Vice President of Human Resources, and I'm here to update you on the condition of our plan, which is, we think, really healthy, and give you some recommendations for your consideration for 2015. We are on a calendar plan year, so open enrollment is approaching. First, I'd like to recap where we are. Since 2012, we've made a series of significant steps that have helped keep us stable, and the steps that you see here have all been on the foundation of a very comprehensive wellness program, a very involved college-wide benefits committee, and the fact that we are self... are self-insured gives us a lot of flexibility. This is total medical claims paid by the college on behalf of employees in 2013, the last full year for which we have the data. And as you can see, we have been relatively stable at a time when the market is not. These medical trends continue to show a slow migration in the cost-sharing for employees from 6% to 9%. This is the result, we believe, of adding the deductibles, adding the High Deductible Health Plan with the HSA. On the employee side, what to focus on here first is the blue bar. So, you can see that the employees have been paying more toward deductibles, which means paying more toward the full cost of their coverage. Correspondingly, their co-pays have been dropping. The upper-left shows pharmacy trends. Genericalization is increasing steadily, which is good. On the right side, again, you see the co-pays of our employees has dropped, because they've been, again, been paying not co-pays, but the cost of the medication. Meanwhile, the bottom-left, you see that our pharmacy costs to the college have remained fairly stable, while the per-claim cost has continued to rise. This chart shows the top conditions of our employees by cost and by numbers affected. They are identical with the exception of the bottom four and five in the rankings. So, on the left side, you see low-back pain is the fourth most expensive, but the fourth most prevalent is allergy, and diabetes is the fifth most expensive, but chronic thyroid disorders exceeds it for a number of people affected. As, again, we believe we have created a very stable environment for our family, and what I'd like you to focus on this slide is the third set of numbers regarding the High Deductible Health Plan with the HSA. A year ago, at the end of the fiscal year, we had 124 of our employees enrolled in that program. In January, they were able to migrate, because employees already here could switch plans, although starting January 1st only have the High Deductible Health Plan option. So, we had a slight drop in enrollees in January. By the end of June, you can see the impact of our decision to only offer the High Deductible Health Plans to new hires, so we expect this migration to continue. Heading into 2015, all of our carriers have also locked in rate guarantees for our employees. So, my recommendations to you this morning are to carry forward our plan as it is, with no increase to our employees in premiums, in co-pays, or in deductibles. In addition, I'm recommending that we move from Aetna to the Hartford. Aetna came to us with some fairly high increases that we were not willing to pass on to our employees, and we went out to market, and the Hartford came back, and there will be no increase in life for our employees with this plan. The increase to the college is only $36,000 over the entire year. Unfortunately, the retirees from everybody who came back to us had an increase, but I want to caution you that they, the maximum they can have is $5,000, and even that 25% increase would mean an increase from $12 to $15 a month. In addition, the Hartford has offered us a three-year rate guarantee. Any questions?
I just want to summarize. Employees, we put in a $300 deductible for everybody two years ago, so that employees had some skin in the game from first dollar. We thought that was a modest commitment. It has paid huge dividends for us. We have now stabilized our costs. We have been able to maintain exactly the same coverage for all our employees now for two years, while the world around us swirls, our people have control over what they're doing, and we're here today to tell you we can do it for another year. No change in the deductible, no change in the premium, no change in the coverage through all of 2015. I think my staff has done an outstanding job on this.
I just wanted to try to get a better understanding of the increase for the recently-retired. Did I hear that correctly?
In the life insurance?
On the life insurance.
It's because the claims just are worse among that cohort.
I think it's an actuarial issue. Everybody sent us increases in that one, and we changed coverage for the lowest one. We buy, the coverage we provide for employees is your, an amount equal to your salary, twice your salary, and then you can supplement that.
By any amount. We ask the Hartford to make it any amount, and they can increase it by any amount the employee wants to pay for.
So, you can pay for a little bit more.
And it's capped at $5,000, I think you said, right?
For retirees.
For retirees.
But the supplemental is not capped for current employees.
Okay. So, a line person could buy five or six times their salary at a very attractive rate. It's term insurance, it's pretty cheap. Our position, and I say it every time I get out there, we're going to try to keep things as stable as we can while things sort out around us, trying to figure out where the market's headed, where to make a move that might pay a dividend. You could wake up on exactly the wrong side of an issue with the way healthcare is shaking out. But when you see the exchanges in Florida going up by 13 and 1/2% next year, I don't know how long we can hold the ground we're on, but we can hold it for another year anyway, and we've locked in a couple of other pieces. So, with your, that, I think, is that a?
It is an action item.
That's an action item, that's what I thought. Okay.
I would move approval.
Second.
Who's all in favor?
Aye.
So moved. D2, construction, Clearwater Library.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, I think you have in front of you item D2A, selection of construction manager at risk. We have used, to great effect, the process that Trustee Oliver helped us to develop. Trustee Westine was part of that process and was our board liaison to that process. We had great presentations, and we are here to make a recommendation to you that Creative Contractors, Inc. of Clearwater be the designated amount. Let me ask Ms. Westine to add her comments.
The only thing I'll add is that I thought the process went very, very well. This was, there's no question that this was harder than it looks, I guess, is the nice way of putting it. You had very, very good presentations, you have very, very good organizations, and at the end of the day, because we have criteria upon which to make a decision, it was easy to assign points to criteria and then make that happen. But I can see where, if you don't have a process and you don't have criteria, I can see where it'd be ultimately challenging. But in this case, Creative Contractors did come out on top, let's see, Creative Contractors, Gilbain, and then A.D. Morgan, and I would ask for your support in accepting Creative Contractors.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, our second item is, now that we have our large capital projects pretty well solidified as far as the screening and selection process, we want to go down to the next level, that being our small contractors, our miscellaneous architectural services, engineering services, and things like that. Some of those are in various stages of expiration, and it's time to revisit all of those, get those all advertised out on the street, refreshed, renewed, and give everybody a new chance at some work. So, that's what this Board Member, item D2B, requests permission to advertise for those various miscellaneous professional services.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Dr. Law, can you explain this a little bit? Because I know we talked about it. I think this is a good thing to talk about.
Periodically, we advertise to pre-qualify professional services for projects that may not come back to the Board. So, we approve a lot of smaller projects along the way. One of our, so we need a ready list of pre-qualified companies that we can call up and use criteria to employ their services. So, we do engineers, we do architects, we do small construction companies, and that's the key, the one that we've put a lot of energy into. This is a way for us to expand the pipeline of small companies that have a hope of being bigger companies, but we get a chance to work with them on smaller projects, to nurture them, to be sure that they're reliable and that we can qualify them later on, they understand how to get the paperwork filed, what our values are. So, periodically, we just renew that list. You'll see that we will try, we will limit it to eight or 10 contractors. I think, Mr. Gibbons, we had a discussion about a smaller list. We think a little more than the number you and I discussed, about half that, and that might not be enough. We want to have a ready inventory of people we can call up and say, "Look, we need people to do some work while the college is closed during the holiday break. We need you in here for two weeks. Get in, get out, get things fixed. We're closed. You do your work when we open. We want it ready to go." And this works fine. It just makes our life a lot easier. It is a good way for us to make sure the dollars stay locally as well, so that we can pre-qualify locals. So, you're not, we're not asking to do anything except approve the process that we're going to go through, and then we have an inventory. We'll bring back a list of who we're recommending on that list.
Jim, is this the same process and the same criteria that we used previously?
Criteria will be very similar. The process will not involve board member appointees. We'll narrow it down to some in-house personnel, probably some community participation, depending on the skill set we're working with. We may employ some folks from the school board, for example, but normally, the Board is not involved in the screening and selection. It's not that.
But it's the same type of criteria that we used?
Yes, very similar.
So, for instance, when we were trying to get our act together, to put together a game plan, to go to the legislature for us the money for Bay Pines, we have to get some engineering services. They're not doing the engineering work for the project, but we need to get a sense of how much, what does it look like, that kind of thing. So, we may have a smaller contract of $40,000, $50,000 for engineering work, but we need a ready list of people who can then do that. Same thing with some smaller architectural projects that we can't design ourselves and that sort of thing. So, in-house, smaller projects. We'll bring you the list back, you'll know who it is. You know, I just want to reassure everybody that this is helpful to us, and it's all the cards are faced, so.
What's the size usually of the projects we're talking about, Dr. Law?
I have authority up to $325,000.
He says 325.
325. So, that's about the right, you know, that's a good-sized project. The sad reality is you don't get a whole lot for $325,000 anymore. There was a time when that was a big project. But then you get, you know, we report them to you on the quarterly report of contracts that I've approved, so.
I think this is a great thing to have, because the list of contractors already know what our insurance requirements are, they're already qualified. It's, in our business, we call it a master service agreement.
There you go.
But it's like having a list that you can go to, and everybody kind of knows bilaterally what's required to do the work, and you don't have to waste a lot of time going through the push-ups of qualifying folks at the last minute. So, I think this is a good idea. Any more discussion? Has been a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And our third item is a request to advertise for design-build services. This is back to the capital, large capital projects. This is a green living demonstration center proposed for the Seminole campus, funded partially through a Department of Energy grant of $475,000, a one-to-one match required by the college of another $475,000, most of which will be done within-kind services, academic programming, contributions from Facilities Department, contributions from student volunteers, things like that will be enumerated and comprised, to a large extent, the college's contribution. Cash outlay from the college is $200,000, making the total construction cost, less the in-kind services, of $675,000. So, we're over the 325 threshold, and will develop or deliver this project very much like we have the Midtown, the Clearwater Project, library project that you just approved, and the ongoing Bay Pines project is also following that same process.
So moved.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Consent agenda. Any discussion on any items in the consent agenda?
Move we accept the consent agenda, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Actually, I did make a mistake early already. We skipped something. So, the appointment of board members to the direct support organizational boards. So, I apologize, I made a mistake already. But we all have, I'm not sure who has what, sir. I know I'm with the Foundation. Mr. Oliver, you're? Strategic Policy Solutions.
I'm with Laleepa Ratner.
Ms. Westine?
I don't know where I am.
That's it, we, that's the Alumni Association, they're no longer there. So, those are the three appointments for right now.
Wherever anybody wants to put me is fine.
I'll keep Laleepa Ratner. She's kind of far, but I'll.
It's up there. I'll continue on the one I'm on, the Institute. I'm sure you're welcome to the Foundation, if I'm not mistaken, Frances, they would love to see. There you go. The Foundation.
That's a good appointment. That's a good appointment.
I would think that.
I'm happy to join.
Well, can I have a motion for those, then?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Information reports, quarterly information report, contract items.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, we include these for your reading pleasure. I was glad to see the Admiral Farragut. If it wasn't first alphabetically, Mr. Chairman, we would have put it first in our heart. It would have been at the top of our list.
Thank you. Pays if you start with an A. There's no approval or anything else?
No, sir, that's information.
Okay. Public access on the agenda items. Proposed changes to the board rules, a manual. Do I have to open a public hearing, sir?
You need to close the board meeting and open the public hearing, so that's your official role.
I hereby close our board meeting, and I'll open the public part of the agenda.
We have two items that are really, they're not new, but we're trying to, sabbatical leaves, we have put in place, so we have sabbatical leave policy, and I think we are simply norming our rules to reflect what actually occurred after we got the policy in place, okay?
You can just tell us you're trying to take a sabbatical, Doc.
I'm not trying to take any sabbatical, and you won't owe me money on a leave for a sabbatical either, Mr. Chairman, Mr. former Chairman.
Good catch.
It was too, it was too easy, I'm sorry.
We're really proud of this program. We had it working, and Rich Mercadante, our faculty governance organization president, has done a spectacular job getting this program up and running. We have people already on sabbatical leaves. We're simply trying to make sure that our rules manual continues to make changes. Somebody else will have to discuss the receipts deposit and dispersments rule, why that appears. Maybe our college attorney could tell us that one.
Yes, this rule was changed to comply with the Florida statutes as relates to the provisions on electronic funds transfer. So, it was an updating of the rule.
Both are ministerial, I recommend both.
Second. I hear a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Down to the President's report, sir.
The, this is an item that I'm chasing a little bit, but I wanted, if we could take just a minute. We have, we tried late in the spring, couldn't get the schedules worked out. We've committed to do a joint meeting with the school board next month. Superintendent Gregor and I have not had a chance to sit down and go through what we want to do. We know we want to review the dual enrollment. A lot of it will be self-congratulatory, our relationship with them. I know we will want to get an update from them on their thinking and their actions regarding the Pinellas Technical College shift that they did for the P-Tech name. I was at their board meeting last week, and I'm well in there, we're in good shape on that. Certainly, we want to be sure we understand the superintendent's commitment to the Elite Educator Program, and then where we go next. One of the things we have to do, though, is continue to work with them to make the structural changes. They're great partners, if anyone misreads this, but we need to have a special relationship for their students to get to us. They, I want to be very careful. You know, they get overrun if they're not careful about access to their students in the 11th and 12th grade. Everybody, every day, there's somebody who wants to come in and see all their students or whatnot, and I understand the need for a process. Some days, we feel like, hey, we're the neighbors, we ought to be able to. Some days, we feel like, hey, we're the neighbors, we ought to be able to come in a little more easily and that kind of stuff. Some of the exchange of data with them is really important for us to help students get to the right place, so we want to, we have a small list of items that we want to grow on. What are the other kind of public policy? What, what else, when I meet with superintendent, what else would you like to discuss?
And I, and I appreciate how sensitive of a topic this is, but I had the opportunity to attend the collegiate high school's graduation. And I, I was overwhelmed at the opportunity that we were offering these students. It is, it is a very South County program. I would like to see us expand that, whether it be to Central, whether it be to North. But that program is absolutely amazing, I think, at a time where we're looking for different ways to motivate students. I would like to see us talk about that. I realize that that may not be the most popular thing to discuss.
That's a worthy topic.
But with that said, this is one of those things where if, if both of us agree that our goal is student achievement, it's hard to, it's hard to argue with the, with, with the level of achievement that came from collegiate high school, period. I mean, so if that's our goal, I, I think that we need to look into that. I realize I don't make your life any easier. I realize I. But with that said, you know, our goal at the end of the day is, is student success. And you cannot argue that that program has produced student success, and to duplicate it would only, would only help more of our students.
I, I salute you. I, I mean, trying to send signals through the headlines to get to the bottom of that issue or to get to the center would be a disaster. I think we're sitting with friends and say, what's your plan? What's our plan? What works, what doesn't work? How's this? What would be the impediments? And I, I don't, I think it's, that gives us some real substance to, to go. I mean, cheerleading on the successes we've had is nice, but we're not running for office.
I would, I would definitely agree with, with Ms. Westine on that. We need to figure out how to do that in North County, we have so much success. But two, well, Millennium Gates College today, I mean, I'm sure there are students in North County that could benefit from the program. You know, one of the other things that I'd like for us to talk about, the school board, Dr. Law, is there seems to be no rhyme or reason on how they, and I say they, I mean, the K through 12 system is preparing a student to come to St. Petersburg College. I mean, what is, what is their preparation process? But also, the talent pool that you utilize for principals and other things, you know, how successful, because lately, I've been seeing a lot of DNF schools, but no changes in, in the administration in terms of the principals, if they've not been successful. And they have these academies, for example, Northeast High School does a good job, and that, so I don't think I'm criticizing, but they have this, the Business Academy, you know? How many of those students are actually coming to our campus in the four years that they're in that program to see what we offer in terms of a business degree? And, and there are so many other programs, they have these academies in these schools. I don't think they ever touch us. I don't even think they come to look at us. They're, you know, they have, they're training them on supposedly, you know, getting a business degree, but we have one of the better business schools in the area, and we don't have any tie to them whatsoever. So how do, how does the principal, the whole school, how do, what are they doing to say, okay, you're supposed to be a Business Academy. What have you done to connect them to St. Petersburg College? This student, if they're a C student, they may or not be able to go to Florida, Florida State, Miami, wherever, but they could go to SPC immediately and be in our business program.
We'll add that. I think that's a, again, another, that, that's a worthy topic. And, and if I could build on that, Mr. Givens, that, you know, we're, this time next year, we're going to be celebrating our, our new Midtown campus. I think, I think I could hit a three wood from the, from the roof to get to four or five of their lowest-performing schools. So how are we going to work together to change the, the whole educational infrastructure in a critical part of our community? And we both stand ready to do it. I think it's, I'm not saying it out loud, though.
I think you're right.
And doing it, so.
Do we, do we part, does the Allstate Center partner with, I know the Criminal Justice Academy is at Pinellas Park High School. Do we, does our Allstate Center partner with them in any? Yes?
Yeah, I, I'm looking, Scott, but we have, yes, we do, and I'm very proud, we host some summer programs there to get, get kids into that facility, to experience things that they wouldn't otherwise have. We, you know, we drive fast with them, we put them on boats and planes, and we, we do the whole deal, so yes. But there's more to be done. I, you know, this, this Elite Educator Program is just the first start of how we can partner with. We've got a great College of Education, that early, early childhood education program. So I'll, I'll make a list. I will get on, on Mike's agenda right away. He's a great partner, I want to say, and we'll develop a quick agenda.
But every one of those programs that we have a certificate or a degree program, Dr. Law, they should be tied in some way to us.
Okay. And I'm, I wish I could tell you exactly, I'm not recommending this, they meet all day, okay? I think we'll, I think we'll figure out.
Lunch.
If we have, if we have some of our own business to take care of, maybe we can dispatch some. We'll, we'll keep the agenda really slim, if there's a couple of decisions that have to get made on some of the contract or whatnot. And then we'll have a, a joint hour with them and, and share information and, and.
They said they meet all day?
No, no, I'm recommending us for a good two.
Their meetings are all day.
Their meetings are all day.
Oh, no, no.
They just, no, no, no.
That's why they got a problem.